I think so, yes please.
This May 3, 2021, regular meeting of the Mount Hore Area School District's Board of Education shall come to order. Before our roll call, I do like to offer a public word of thanks to Mr. Heiss. The board has just completed its annual reorganization meeting, ending in a year where Mr. Heiss has led us through some of the heaviest and hardest decisions schools were ever asked to make. So Rod, I really do thank you for your steadfast dedication to Mount Hore. Joining the board table as officers for the next calendar year are Jessica Aragonias Treasurer, Leo Lipskjaer as Clerk, Diana Rothamer as Vice President, and I, Kimberly Saylor, will serve as President. Roll call, Jim.
Here.
Jeff?
Here.
Rod?
Here.
Jessica?
Yeah?
Here.
And Diana?
Here.
Shelby, has this meeting been properly notified and certifying?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. If you're able, please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item 1B, Mrs. Rothamer, would you please read our mission statement this evening?
Sure. Mount Hore Area School District in partnership with the community dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, referring and empowering them to be productive, responsible, self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you. Item 2A, approval of the presented revised agenda. Are there any revision requests from the board?
To approve.
Second.
Motion made by Diana and seconded by Jeff to approve the agenda as presented. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose say nay. Motion passes. Item 2B, approval of the April 19, 2021 Board Meeting Minutes. Motion made by Jeff and seconded by Diana to approve the April 19 minutes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose say nay. Motion passes. Item 3A, this month's student spotlight featuring a deserving middle school student. Dr. Salerno, would you please introduce our recipient?
Absolutely. Thank you so much. And we see Annika and her beautiful family there. How grateful we are to carry on the tradition of excellence when it comes to selecting our student showcase. Paul Christensen, Principal Christensen, and his Associate Principal Melissa Hanson have been instrumental in selecting this month's recipient. Paul, can I turn it over to you just to share all the great reasons why Annika was selected?
Absolutely. Thank you for giving me just a couple of minutes. So Annika Schaller is a 7th grader here at the middle school in the Harbor House. And I will tell you that she just absolutely epitomizes what it means to be responsible, respectful, and ready as a middle school student. I can tell you that she makes all of us at Mount Hore Middle School extremely proud. And Mount Hore Middle School are building as a whole, I really think, is a better place because of how inclusive she is, how thoughtful she is, and just how eager she is to learn. I did ask a couple of her teachers to just share a couple of things about her, so I'll just pull out a few pieces from her teachers. Annika is kind, caring, and a very hard worker. She is always willing to work with other students, even if they are not as advanced. Annika is a lovely person. Annika is helpful to those around her and a team player in every way. And Annika is a very gifted singer and performer, but is still always looking to improve and doesn't shy away from challenges or mistakes. She actually was recently asked by our high school music department to take part in the high school musical Mary Poppins and was a part of the high school's production of The Music Man as a 5th grader, both of which are huge honors for her. So as I said before, I could not be more proud to have Annika here today and just recognize her as just a fantastic middle school student. We're so pleased she's a part of the middle school. She just makes us all better. So Annika, thank you so much for accepting. We are so very proud of you. Very, very well done.
Annika, who are those wonderful people that are with you tonight?
These are my parents.
It's me. Kara Schaller.
And Adam Schaller.
Pleasure to meet both of you. So where does Annika get the music talent, for both of you, or mom?
I'm a music teacher, yes.
Wonderful. And if I remember right, you have a brother too, don't you?
I have two twin brothers. I don't know where they are, though.
Good night to celebrate. We're so proud of you on behalf of the board and your administrative team, your staff. You are an absolute delight. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Annika. You had so much for our school community.
Thank you, Annika, and Mom and Dad for coming along tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Nina, item 3B, school news. Is our student rep Kate on the line?
Hi, everybody. Happy Monday. So I just have two quick things to share with you all tonight. First off, as always, sports are still going strong, as you can tell by this lovely outfit that I'm wearing right now. I believe there is a boys soccer game going on right now, and I am especially excited for the girls soccer team's first game in two years this Friday. And also, I believe that there are a few high school students going on to cross-country state this weekend, so that is super exciting. Also, baseball and golf are still going, so as always, be sure to tune into those events and support our Vikings. And secondly, it is Staff Appreciation Week this week, so I just wanted to extend my appreciation to all of our amazing staff members across the district and encourage you to do the same. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Kate. Dr. Salerno, what other school news would you like to share?
Just one other item, if you don't mind. In addition to Staff Appreciation Week, we are also looking forward to tickets going on sale soon for Mary Poppins. That event will be handled on May 28 and 29 at 7:30 PM. That will be a fully online production, and we're looking forward to our students' performance details. About how to purchase will be on our website and social media sites shortly.
Thank you. Board members, any school news to share from you? All right, then we'll move on to item 3C, citizen comments. Since audience members continue to participate remotely, we will proceed with our text number format. Those wishing to speak should text their first name, last name, and address to 608-250-9166. Again, that number is 608-250-9166. Dr. Salerno, are there any citizens signed up to speak?
Yes, any. Right now, no.
A second call for citizens' comments, 608-250-9166. We also welcome citizen comments at the end of our meetings. Let's call for citizen comments. None. Moving on to item 4A, personnel transactions. Board members, these transactions do include all of our 2021-2022 school year faculty contracts, as well as our co-curricular positions. Dr. Salerno, do you have any remarks?
No, thank you.
Board members, questions or clarifications on personnel transactions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion being by Leah and seconded by Jeff to approve the personnel transactions. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion passes. Item 5, consent agenda. Board members, in addition to our usual and customary minutes and reports, tonight's consent agenda also includes our 2021-2022 school year driver's ed contract. Would any board members like to remark upon letters A through F individually? Motion made by Jeff and seconded by Jessica to approve the consent agenda. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion passes. Moving on to our discussion items. Item 6A, committee member reports. Dr. Hannah, Buildings and Grounds.
We met last Monday. And Dave Reed gave us his Building and Grounds report. Things were going well. They kept getting the yard equipment ready and mowing the yards. And there were some issues with some smaller equipment, but they were getting parts in to get them fixed. The budgets for the Building and Grounds remain the same for now. They're hoping that things stay about as normal as it was for this year. For heating fuel for a mild winter, and it should be pretty close. He stated for the way the budget is drawn up. Transportation. He, Brian Toth, gave his report of the bus drivers' issues. Down a couple of drivers who are making it work by double routing. He also stated that coming down the pipe that two buses are out there right now that are fully electric. And that he's gonna try and get ahold of one possibly by next fall to see how it works. But he's gonna let us know further down the line on that. And his budget went down $220,000. Because we will not be purchasing buses due to budget issues. Then we had our 55-minute discussion. People that run 4K out of their homes. And it was a very long discussions both ways. And we were trying to get our part of it in, kept getting interrupted. I tabled it till the next meeting. I went home. And I dug through my notes from when 4K got started and with this. And it was the fact that the people are upset because they their kids are not dropped off at their house like they were picked up at their house like they were when it first started. And those notes were in my possession from the meeting, and that's the way it was made. That any certified home-schooled 4K teaching that they would be dropped off at their driveway or their front door. And they got changed. It should not have happened. So we're gonna have further discussion on that at our next meeting, the 24th of May. And I know you were listening in on that part of it. They were pretty much spot on for everything that I had in my notes, so. As far as that, that's my report.
Thank you, Jeff. Are there any questions or comments for Jeff? None. Mrs. Rothamer, your Finance Committee report, please.
Yes, thank you. We met on April 12. The Finance Committee. We had a pleasure of accepting donations again this time. We're very fortunate in that every time we have a Finance Committee meeting, it seems like we get to accept donations from our community members. This was no exception. We reviewed our taxes that we had received to date for the month of February. We also reviewed our quarterly, quarterly review of the budget. Focus on areas of personnel, the OPEP trust, Medicaid funding, and fee service, as you know, with the pandemic. Very concerned about our first fee service budget, but we're in a much better place than we were last year at this time, so that was very good news. We also took a little bit of time to review our budget calendar, upcoming meetings, and what we're discussing as we move forward. That was pretty much our meeting last time around.
To Diana, are there any questions or comments for that?
Brian has submitted two grants, one for mental health for $72,000. That grant will help us cover in-district training, preventative curriculum, our work with AIA, and other professional development. And then we also had a grant go in for $15,000 to do some more youth frontiers. If anybody hasn't done that, it's phenomenal. You should definitely volunteer. And then also some AODA prevention and supports. We did discuss the raw data for the Dane County Youth Risk Assessment. There were some pretty concerning numbers with anxiety, suicide. Students indicating they'd attempted suicide and stressors being school. So our admin team is digging in on that. And on a positive note, though, there was a significant increase in the number of students who have more than one adult outside of a parent that they can talk to. So that was at least nice to see. We tabled our equity update because we ran out of time. And our next meeting is May 17.
Thank you, Leah. Are there any questions or comments for Leah?
I have a question. So, and I can't remember. I think we had a discussion about this last meeting or the meeting before as well. But when you look at the Dane County data, when did, when did all of those adverse indicators begin to jump up? I mean, obviously, they were too high to begin with, but they have jumped up since then. When did they begin to jump up?
You mean which school year?
In time, in time.
It jumped significantly from last year's data. We don't have the comparison data yet. We just had the raw data, so it was going off memory. Said it was gonna be a little while before we got the comparison data.
They told us that they were hoping to get it in about a month, so before the end of the school year. So hopefully, we'll be able to share what we're like compared to other districts and then our data from the last time we did the Dane County Youth Survey by the, by sometime in May, early June.
So I'd like to see, the next time we talk about this, I'd like to see that data on a time scale. So when, and because it's gonna, it's gonna spike up and stay up, but I'm just interesting, I'm just interested in the timing of that.
That sounds great. And it'll be certain questions, too. They added a lot of questions this year related to COVID, which clearly, those are the first-year questions. But yeah, especially the one, I know exactly the ones that you're talking about, the suicide, the attempting suicide, kind of the big, the big issues, for sure.
Great. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, thank you.
And thank you, Leah, too.
Thank you, Rod. Further questions on Leah's updates? Moving on to item 6B, an update on our in-progress 4K contracts. Mrs. Straka, are you on the line?
I am. Thank you very much. Yeah, so we've met, I think, twice now with looking through our 4K contracts. And we, the first meeting, we did a crosswalk with the DCF components or criteria of what a solid contract would have. And of those inter-agency agreement components, we were able to check off most of them, which was great to see. There is some strengthening we can do as well. And we went through each of those and documented those next action steps. From that meeting, then, that first meeting, we did a little homework. Diana helped us with the dispute language, so thank you for that. We added that language in, and then we also did some tweaking with the structure of our contract, making sure that the services that we provide, the sites, were clearly identified in the contract as well. And then just some language cleanup as well. We presented this revised contract during our second meeting and went through it and all felt comfortable with where we were at. And then we provided this to Mike Jolka, who's one of our district attorneys. And he, he had one of his colleagues who focuses on 4K contracts, provided some feedback. We received that late last week and had some time to go through it and now are looking to schedule a third meeting where we can meet with Kimberly and Diana, Nicole Teep, myself, and Julie Hamm, who is the 4K representative, to talk through some of these changes. And hopefully, come back to the school board, maybe at the next meeting, if we can find a time to all connect, maybe next week, to go through these changes.
Thank you, Mrs. Straka. Are there any questions or comments about the 4K contracts thus far?
I have one. So, and it's about timing as well, so tonight must be my, my timing night. But Dr. Straka, are we, are we in a regular budget negotiation schedule? Or is this in the middle of a, of a contract? Or where, where are we in terms of timing of the contract?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. So typically, in November, December time, we always cash forward for the next school year. So last December, you all voted for the 21-22 school contract or the 4K contract already. So what we're looking at are language changes for the 22-23 contract. Does that help?
It does.
Other questions about a 4K contracts? None. Moving on to item 6A, our standing COVID-19 update. Dr. Salerno.
Good evening again, board members and community members. We held our second vaccination clinic for students 16 years old and older. We did that this past Thursday. About 60 of our young people received the Pfizer vaccine. Because not all of the slots were filled with Mount Hore students, we did end up opening that opportunity to surrounding school districts. And of course, they were most appreciative. I heard just here tonight, Board Member Lipskjaer mentioning that there might be some news soon with regard to 12, students aged 12 to 15 years being permitted access to the vaccine. And we want you to know, we're gonna commit to our continuing sourcing efforts so that additional clinics could be offered in the district at a reasonable time. Also wanted to mention that emergency order number 16 allows for increasing gathering and capacity limits for all businesses. Now, this, this order goes into effect on May the 5th and will be in effect until June 2nd. It's very important that we note June 2nd because, of course, we have graduation coming due at the Alliance Energy Center. We're looking forward to having that in the Coliseum. And we're hopeful that we can continue to get as many people there who want to be there. And we'll continue to, to follow that news with PHMDC. To be sure, face coverings are still required in our schools. And one of the biggest pieces that we think, if there are a headline to come out of order number 16, has to do with face coverings in our music program. Allowing our students who are actively playing an instrument that would have a bell cover on it as long as people are still six feet apart at all times. And want to commend our music program for continuing to advocate and to work to make that happen. And lastly, if you don't mind, I just wanted to share with the board ongoing efforts we're taking in order to ascertain the number of families, number of students, I should say, who are interested in a virtual pathway for this upcoming school year. You can see this okay? This is now our latest breakout. About 45 students who have now requested this. And what we're discerning now are how many of those students are seeking to have this virtual pathway who might have COVID-related concerns versus students who might have school phobia or anxiety kinds of issues that might necessitate learning online and/or both. And so what we hope to do is continue to seek out options for families. Should the board elect to move in this direction, there'll be some money that will be required in order to make that happen. And we're continuing to work with our teacher leaders in order to find ways in which we don't make this an overly burdensome task for our staff, as well as making certain our kids get the rigorous curriculum that they are deserving. So these numbers that you see on the screen right now are representative of current-age students. So when you see an 11th grader and you've got six 11th graders, that really means next year's seniors, so to speak. So we look forward to hopefully being able to provide you, the board, with a recommendation for your consideration at your meeting on the 17th. Can you answer any questions you may have?
Questions for Steve?
Dr. Salerno, how many of our students elected the vaccine out of the 60?
You know, I don't know the answer to that. Brian, are you on the call?
I am.
Brian, can you provide an estimate as to how many of the students that we had those 60 vaccines for last Thursday afternoon? How many would you guess would have been Mount Hore students?
I think we were about 44 filled, and then we opened it up to the rest, to other, the other districts. But, and then just to remember, too, that we do know that a lot of families went elsewhere to get their vaccines. And I do know, too, because we had some people switch, they went directly to Mount Hore Pharmacy as well and got their shots there because the times didn't work. So we helped set them up with them, and so I know that they went during lunch hours some other times. So if families contacted me about getting the vaccine or during different times, we were able to reconnect them most of the time to another slot or another appointment to be able to get, to get their shot.
I'd say by all total, close to 100 students in Mount Hore took advantage of the clinic here than not knowing the 40 that you just talked about. So thank you for that, Brian. And by the way, Brian and CJ are really to be commended. Cheyenne Goodwin, our high school nurse, really wonderful in helping get this all off the ground. Very commendable.
The questions for Steve. Even our next meeting, where you just proposed that we consider a virtual instruction option. Will that be more of a definitive yes/no you're looking for from the board at that point to implement? Or are you looking for a directive to continue planning?
Well, we'd like to be able to present something to you. It would be helpful if we had some direction. I think that might allay concerns for our families. I don't think it's the final shot, if you will. I think we want to make certain that we study this as closely as we can, is there are financial implications?
Thank you. Other questions for Dr. Salerno? Moving on then to action items. 7A, a second reading of policy 377, interscholastic athletics. Board members, this policy was not approved at our last meeting. In order to gather some more information on the gender language usage, Mrs. Straka, do you have any further information for us to consider?
Yes, I do. So after our board meeting, I reached out to Dave Anderson from the WIAA. He's the executive director, and he handles some of these policy questions that we have. And within his response back, he stated that the WIAA, excuse me, and as well as many other state high school athletic associations, don't currently utilize any non-binary language. So they still utilize the language of male and female as they talk about their sports opportunities. Excuse me, I'm a frog. So within the policy itself, we indicated those two, we indicated two documents. They are oh, they're listed at the bottom. They are the WIAA transgender participant policy and the people non-discrimination guidelines for athletics, which is an August 2013 publication. So that's what he provided me. And then we just made a note to also, to state the WIAA, the Wisconsin Interscholastic Athletic Association, within the policy as well.
Board members, questions or comments on this policy? Then I'll be happy to entertain a motion to approve the revisions to policy 377.
Second.
Motion made by Jeff and seconded by Rod to approve the revisions to policy 377. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Revisions to policy 377, interscholastic athletics pass. Revisions to policy 377, interscholastic athletics passes. Item 7B, consideration of amendments to the 2020-2022 employee handbook, referred by the Personnel Committee on April 22nd. Mrs. Earthham, are you on the line?
I am. Thank you. So I think a couple of board meetings back, we had Principal Cody Lundquist share the revised schedule that will be coming for the bell schedule at the high school. And that prompted some considerations that you see before you tonight around the employee handbook that would be effective for September 1st in the new school year. They are around the teacher load at the high school, clarifying what those class periods are going to look like from the previous language. And then also, it prompted some consideration around the replacement teacher wage and adding in to that Section B, the 28, for each, each period of 65 to 80 minutes for lost preparation time, since they'll be going to those longer class periods.
Thank you. Board members, questions or comments about these proposals?
Second.
Motion made by Leah and seconded by Jessica to incorporate these employee handbook changes. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion passes. These revisions to the employee handbook go into effect September 1st, 2021. Item 7C, consideration of a letter from the Board of Education in honor of Staff Appreciation Week, Mrs. Arigoni.
Thank you, Kimberly. So Kimberly and I drafted a letter in honor of Teacher Appreciation Week for your review and consideration that we might circulate it to the instructional staff of Mount Ork. This has been an incredible year, and it seems like a more than appropriate time to express our gratitude.
Questions?
Yeah, so one thing, Jessica, I think I just heard you say, I wouldn't live, I wouldn't limit this to instructional staff. And we've got lots of other non-instructional staff that, that moved heaven and earth during the last year as well. So I would, I would include them. If they're not already included in the language, I would include them in the language as well.
And I think it's actually Staff Appreciation Week and not, not Teacher Appreciation Week. I think it was changed a few years ago. It encompassed more staff. Jessica, what is your intended publication method for the letter?
Honestly, I was curious to what the board suggested, but I thought that, I thought two things. I thought we could post it on our district Facebook page and then also that we could mail it to the staff from us. Those are appropriate.
Readable? I think I'll entertain a motion to approve the board's staff appreciation letter with the feedback revisions that were given to Jessica.
Second.
Motion made by Jeff, seconded by Leah to approve the staff's, approve the board's staff appreciation letter. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries her staff appreciation letter is approved. Item 7D, the consideration of alterations to our 2021-2022 school year calendar. Dr. Salerno.
Good evening again, Board members. This is a request to move one of our professional development days from October for our staff and move it up front to the beginning of the school year. This would allow us some professional development around our PLCs and equity work. So in essence, really what you're seeing here is a proposal to move the October PD day to the very first day of the Professional Development Week, which is gonna be August 23rd of 2021.
Motion made by Jeff and seconded by Jessica to approve these calendar alterations. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion passes. Discuss changes to the 2021-2022 school year calendar are approved. Item 7E, the approval of our annual CISA II contract. The upcoming year's services include a subscription to the Professional Resource Center and Assistive Technology Library, the Title III Consortium, and a professional development retainer for our staff. Are there any questions that Dr. Salerno or perhaps Mrs. Straka can field for us? If not, I'll seek a motion to approve.
Over. Second.
Motion made by Diana and seconded by Leah. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries our 2021-2022 CISA II service contract is approved. Item 8, our second designated time for citizen comments. Who's wishing to speak should please text their first and last name as well as their address to 608-250-9166. Dr. Salerno, are there any citizens signed up to speak?
I don't see any yet.
And the number to text is 608-250-9166. Dr. Salerno? Here and then, we'll belong to item 9, future agenda items. Board members, does anyone wish to add to our presented list of future topics or have any questions about this presented list? Here and then, please know I would love to work collaboratively with you. So I would welcome a call at any time about any agenda proposals. Item 10, our schedule of next meetings is listed. Dr. Salerno or Shelby, is there anything out of the ordinary here?
Shelby, I'll let you go first. I want to remind the board that we do have our retirement celebration that's coming up. You might have already received an invitation in the mail. If you could please RSVP to Sarah Earthham. We want to celebrate not only the class of 2021 retirees, but also last year's class, who unfortunately didn't get a chance to enjoy.
Thank you. Item 11A, closed session. Contemplated closed session per Section 19.85, Paragraph 1, Subparagraph E. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whether competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And Subparagraph C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Roll call, roll call. Diana?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
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 Rod?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Did we have a motion? I don't know if we needed one or not, but.
In the strictest of sense, yes, we would want a motion, but I think I heard unanimous across the table that we were okay.
Thank you. Then our open session is now adjourned. We will resume in five minutes.
Steve, is there anywhere where you can get a, get a drink of water? I mean, they turned, turned the one off by the restroom. But is there another one somewhere?
I was looking here to see if it was done.
Don't worry, but don't worry about it.
Why do you retire?
It's over there.
I'm doing it. It is this year. Just kind of.
I'll call you three in the morning. I'm gonna call you.
Not before this gets to your hands.
That was like, that was the, that was the most succinct motion I've ever heard. Hey, Jeff literally went.
He's on it.
That was awesome. That was good.